I'd like to call to order the regular governing board meeting of the Jefferson Elementary School District, April 13, 2016, at 7:02 PM. Could we have members present, please?
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Manufo Liainga Anawai. Marie Brizuela.
Here.
Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
I'd just like to share with the rest of the board, Ms. Manufo Liainga Anawai asked me to let you know she's not able to be here. She is out of town at a work-related conference this week, so it's hard to get here for a meeting. So, I told her it would be okay. We all miss one every so often.
Okay. And I believe we have some students from Thomas Edison Elementary here to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody, please rise.
Please put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll be seeing you again in a few moments, I believe. If we could take a minute, members of the board, to review our board meeting guidelines. I would like to remove the closed session item. We will not be holding closed session. So, if we could have a motion to approve a slightly modified agenda?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda with the deletion of item 17, closed session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Then, we have at this time, a special presentation from the Thomas Edison ROAR Project. Riza Bell, Principal of Thomas Edison Elementary, and Jamie Natusy, Student Support Resource Teacher, will present the ROAR report, an outcome of their monthly multi-tiered system of support, teacher roundtable meetings. Students participating will present how they feel about being part of the ROAR staff and hand out interview questions for the next issue of the ROAR report.
Good evening, members of board and cabinet. Thanks for having us here. I'm Riza Bell, the Principal of Thomas Edison. And, we're going to be talking about our collaboration at Thomas Edison, because we believe children are the priority, change is the reality, and collaboration is our strategy. At Thomas Edison, when we started implementing the MTSS program, the teachers came up with the idea of having a MTSS roundtable. And, so it's a teacher collaboration meeting, and they voted on it to have it Wednesday a month. And, in it, teachers will bring up students, and we'll discuss it as a whole staff. And this gives them the chance to talk to teachers who have had the students in the past, so they know them really well, and get more strategies on how to help the students. And, so we've been doing this, and one of the ideas that came out of our MTSS roundtable was to create a student-run newspaper, and that's the ROAR. This is one of the notes that come out of it. Mr. Wan takes notes at every roundtable, and the teacher who has the student that we're discussing gets a write-up on what we came up with and different strategies they can use within a classroom. And this is our ROAR staff. And Mr. Natusy, who runs our ROAR newspaper, is going to talk about how he does it.
So, good evening. I'm James Natusy, Teacher at Thomas Edison, and I'm lucky enough to be the Student Support Resource Teacher. And so I get to work with lots of different levels, and this is a good example of what we get to work with. Any of you remember a principal named Jose Nieto?
Yes.
Anyone else remember Jose Nieto? Well, Jose Nieto was a principal a few years back at Thomas Edison, and one year he gave us a book as a gift, and the book was titled Endangered Minds. And, I can be honest with you, I didn't read the whole thing, but I just remember the title of it mostly. I can tell you this, this staff's minds are not endangered at all. This is a group of kids that really come ready to want to learn. They're what we call, as Mrs. Madar and I were talking the other day, they're teachable, incredibly teachable. And, they want to learn, they ask questions, and they get help when they need it. But I'll introduce them right now. This is only, unfortunately, only some of them could be here this evening, so I guess I'll introduce the ones that are here. So, here we have this evening, Michaela, Michaela Wu. Why don't you stand up, Michaela? Michaela Wu. And Grace Zhang. Grace. And then, of course, Anthony Nathan as well. Pictured here, but unfortunately not able to make it, is Juana Sparza, Noah Oliveras, Abraham Munier, and then Jan, and Alexis Cornejo as well. So what happens is, we meet typically once a week, sometimes we skip a week, and we meet in my room at lunchtime. They give up their recess time, and they come in, and we kind of have little meetings, and we talk about what we want to put in the newspaper. The goal behind the newspaper was to try to bring not just the students together, but the staff together as well, and for the students to learn a little bit about the staff. And so the paper is broken down into various sections, and each one of them gets an opportunity to be the editor. And the editor basically, oh, thank you. The editor basically collects all of the articles using the Google Classroom format as well, and they edit it. And that actually tends to be the hardest job, because they're the ones that have to make sure they get the dates and everybody's things in, and sometimes it's hard to format it. And they'll speak to those challenges in a few minutes. We also have a lead story, basically, and usually something that's going on in our school. We had our talent show, which was our last one. Before that, we had our potluck international dinner, and guess what? You're the lead story for the next one. So you might be in our paper next, and it'll probably be out at the end of this month. Another section, we interview some teachers. We've interviewed the kindergarten teachers, the first grade teachers, and unfortunately, we made a huge mistake in the last edition, and we're going to have to retract that. So they're learning a little bit about fact-finding as well. We made a mistake with one teacher's favorite meal was not a hamburger, it was Mexican food, I believe. So we'll retract that the next time. We have a section called the Did You Know, and that's typically some trending topics. We started one with the Kendama. Unfortunately, after the issue came out, the Kendama got banned.
I had to brown it.
Yeah. But it wasn't because of the article. It was very popular. We have an activity section where they each take a turn trying to come up with some kind of activity for the kids to do. Last one was a connect the dots that turned into a shamrock. We've had word searches, but they have fun doing that. And then we have a survey section, and you'll be glad to hear that our survey, this time, you guys don't even know it, the first time we gave a survey, typically the questions are, you know, what's your favorite lunch meal? And they have some choices to pick. Then we did, what was your favorite sport? And then last month, we did, what was your favorite movie? And last month, we got about 12 responses. We finally figured out that if we put a little dots around the side, maybe the kids will cut it out and they'll stick it in the envelope on my door. This month, we got 75. So we got a lot more surveys back this time. And what we'll do next month is, we'll kind of give the results of what Thomas Edison's favorite movie was, based on that. So that's, those are the sections that we have in the newspaper. And as I said, we meet once, maybe once a week, and I just try to, in the beginning, I kind of tried to guide them, and then I was like, no, I'm not going to guide them. I'll give them some advice, but they kind of guide themselves, and it's kind of nice. We have fourth graders and sixth graders, and they're teaming up really nicely to make a nice publication. Okay? So, what's the next one? Michaela would like to talk a little bit about what is the ROAR report in her mind. So if you give your attention, come on up, Michaela. You okay? Oh, why it's good?
Yeah.
Sorry. There is a typo there. Why it's good, and why the ROAR report is good.
The ROAR report is an elementary school student-run newspaper that covers all kinds of topics. It includes an article about school-wide events, a fun fact section dubbed Did You Know, fun games, surveys, and featuring our very own staff. This is a good influence on our students, because it alerts them what's happening. Most students will not take the time to read the papers given to us after school or read the news. Instead, they'll use their time to watch YouTube or play video games. This is actually more true than ever, because everyone nowadays are absorbed in phones and laptops, even I. I have wasted my time doing this kind of things. But, the newspaper is made by our peers, and we know our classmates' interests. We know what will turn them away and what will draw them in further. Once they start reading about school events, they become more interested in these kind of topics. Another reason this is beneficial, because it's interactive. Students can participate in surveys or be quoted in the article. I've seen my friends, and they've been quoted, and they're actually very excited to be, they're very interested in after.
And then Anthony Nathan would like to talk about why we do it. Correct?
Yeah. All right. My name is Anthony Nathan, and I am privileged to be a part of Thomas Edison's student-run newspaper. In our newspaper, we include articles about prominent topics that students in our school want to learn more about, such as the ever-so-popular Golden State Warriors, items that are sweeping the nation, and also about events that take place in our school, such as the talent show and many of our jolly spirit days. I believe that by making these newspapers, students can keep in touch with not only the things that take place in our school community, but outside of school as well. Reading these articles from a student's perspective is inspiring, because it informs readers about outside-world topics in a short and easy-to-understand manner, which triggers one's sense of curiosity. I'm currently in the sixth grade, and I could easily read a newspaper or watch a local news station, but students in the younger grades would not be able to do some of these things. Interactive and meticulous articles give younger kids the opportunity to learn about important subjects from an early age, which strengthens their knowledge immensely. These articles enhance our abilities to comprehend real-world events with a sense of simplicity. I greatly appreciate how you gave me some of your time to talk about our school newspaper, which I revel in writing, reading, and sharing with my peers. Thank you.
And then last, we have Grace that's going to talk about some of the challenges that we face with it as well.
Good evening. My name is Grace Zhang. I am part of the Thomas Edison Newspaper Committee. A few challenges that the newspaper committee faces when writing and editing our papers is not knowing what the students at Thomas Edison Elementary would like to read about. A very serious obstacle is getting all age groups to want to read our newspaper. We have to cover news that will intrigue first graders, but also look interesting to sixth graders. This is not easy to do, as we would like for our audience to read the whole thing. To tackle this problem, we try to avoid making our articles too long. In our editor months, checks for the typos and incorrect syntax, but also proofreads our articles to make sure that they are not dull and not too lengthy. We always try to cover people, toys, and games that are appropriate, but are also very popular among our school. In our Did You Know section so far, we've covered Kendama facts, video game information, and some interesting tidbits on the basketball star Stephen Curry. We also face the challenge of a deadline. Since our newspaper is monthly, it does give us a generous amount of time, but sometimes it isn't enough. Sometimes our journalists need to catch up from work on class, and this delays their progress. The editor usually can't do anything until the actual writers for the month get their article done. Then, the editor can proofread the article and then format it onto the paper. Which brings me to my next point, formatting. It can be a challenge, because on the computer screen, it looks perfect, but once we print out a test copy, it's all jumbled up on the paper. Our committee has found a way that works to help with formatting, which is simply putting the articles and pictures on the table, so they stay where they're supposed to be. It's a pretty nice way to remove this obstacle. Aside from a few problems, the newspaper is fun and educational, not beneficial just to the committee, who are learning to improve their writing and writing in different styles, but also to our audience. It extends to our readers, who also can pick a few things up from reading the newspaper, which contains well-written articles, especially for younger pupils who are starting to learn how to write. It can be very helpful. Thank you for allowing us this time to share with you our student-run newspaper.
So we brought our interview questions for the next issue, and so if you can please fill them out at your leisure, but have them, your deadline is next Wednesday. You have a deadline also. And there's copies of a couple of the newspapers. Thank you very much.
Great.
Don't go too far away, because board members, do you have any questions for either our staff members or our newspaper staff?
I have more comments than questions, but I did have one question. If you could go back to the first slide, please. Oh, I guess it's the second slide.
Second.
Keep going. Right there. All right. So I was looking at the bottom, where it says the newspaper helped all three challenges, academic, social, emotional, and acceleration. I was just wondering, could you talk about acceleration and exactly what you mean by that?
So during our roundtable meetings, there were students brought up that have, need help academically and socially as well, but we also have students that are accelerated, they're above benchmark, and trying to keep them engaged and wanting happy and interested. And so by having the newspaper and bringing all these students together, the students that were accelerated were able to just run with it. And, the students that academically needed some pushing, they've just jumped in and they want to do really well, and it's made them excited about writing and coming up with their articles and everything. So it's helped all of them really feel a part of it and working on their academics.
All right, great. That's, I thought it might have something to do with that, so I'm happy to hear that we're doing something to address the students that, you know, are proficient or, yeah, above. So, all right, that was the only question. The rest is all comments. First of all, I was really impressed by your speaking skills, all three of you and your vocabulary. So I guess you're working on that too, as part of your journalism. Information is power, and you're putting out information and you're gathering information, so that's great. You're also doing community building by keeping everyone informed of what they have in common, or even some of the differences. You're learning great skills for future employment, possibly, as well. And you're given, you're, you have a chance to find your voice and to exercise that skill to finding your voice. And what I like the most is that you touched on it too, that journalism and newspaper writing and reading is a fading art. And so I'm glad to see that you're picking it up and that you're all excited about it. So keep up the great work.
Well, I want to congratulate the students that spoke tonight. You guys were great, and it sounds like you really love what you're doing, and that's really important. And thank you to our principal, Ms. Bell, and staff that helped put this together. It's really nice. I do know that students that are able to do something that is considered extracurricular kind of thing, they excel, because it's something that they love, something that they really want to do, and that rolls over into being even better in their academics. It helps them. And that's why people need sports and music and, you know, writing and newspapers. And I used to write for the newspaper in my high school, and I know it was really fun, because at high school level, you have a little more leeway, but it was really something that I enjoyed. So, I just want to say to everybody that keep the information going, and that goes for anything that you're doing. The more that you share with people about yourself, or about your school, about what you're doing, the more that they're going to come and join you. And that's what we really want to do, is be a big family, right? Everybody together. So thanks for coming. This was really great, and I definitely look forward to this survey. I will fill it out. Thank you.
I had a question for Ms. Bell and Mr. Natusy. I noticed that one of the slides, you guys talked about having a video newspaper. Could you guys talk about that?
That's right.
Actually, today, Ms. Jennifer Nguyen, our integration technology teacher, came and met with the group and actually started teaching them a program called We Video. And so we're kind of trying to figure out exactly how we'll implement it, but one of the suggestions that we saw was possibly doing morning announcements using the We Video program.
That would be great.
Others are interviews, and then just simply kind of taking essays and kind of turning an essay into something a little bit different. So, they kind of, they have access now to the program, and we're going to meet again in a month with Ms. Nguyen and kind of learn a little bit more how to use it. So we're kind of trying to take it to that multimedia level, but slowly. Right now, we only have eight members of our staff, and we've had lots of people ask, how do I get in? And right now, there's an old TV show called Eight's Enough, and right now, it's just beginning stages. But thank you for having us.
Thank you. That'd be cool to see it actually at one of these meetings, to see what you guys actually end up doing.
Or not.
Yeah. But thank you again for your presentation. You guys were great speakers, and just keep doing what you guys are doing. Just look at this newsletter, it looks great already, so just keep up the great job.
Yeah, and I want to add my thanks to you for coming and to your parents for bringing you, and for all the others who came out in support. I think this is a wonderful program. You know, you touched on some real-world, real-work kind of things that you're dealing with, deadlines. Learning to deal with deadlines is huge. You got to get there. The challenge you've got of trying to write for such a wide age range is a very real challenge, and that you're thinking about it and addressing it is really admirable. And I look forward, I think you gave us some samples here, so I look forward to seeing how you did that. So I just want to say again, congratulations on a really great program, and keep up the good work. And, thank you all for coming. Stick around. We've got a few more things that you'll want to stick around to see. We're going to be moving on to another special presentation, so don't go away yet.
I'd just like to comment and thank Mr. Natusy and Ms. Bell and the other Thomas Edison staff for taking on this product, project. Not only are students need to be interested in it, but our staff needs to be interested in order to help fulfill the students' desires with the project. So thank you for taking that on and incorporating that into your workday. And, I thank the students as well. I recognize many of these personalities from the talent show that I was able to view a couple of weeks ago, and you guys have quite a lovely group at Thomas Edison. Lovely and lively, I should say, both. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So, our next presentation is on the Spelling Bee. I think I see now why we have more young people who haven't spoken to us yet. Ms. Doos, Assistant Principal of Benjamin Franklin Intermediate School and our district facilitator for the Spelling Bee, will introduce the 2016 Spelling Bee grade-level winners and our district's Spelling Bee champion.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Deena Doos. I'm Vice Principal at Ben Franklin Middle School. Go Falcons! And, Mrs. O'Sullivan and I had the distinct pleasure, and we were very, very grateful to be able to co-facilitate the district's Spelling Bee this year. We are very, very grateful, and we extend our deepest thanks to our district volunteers, who, one of them, one of whom was retired and came back to help, and without whose help, we could not have had the Spelling Bee this year. We had 38 students show up that evening with families representing our 14 schools, and our volunteers came together and made it happen. So, before we move on to acknowledging our wonderful grade-level winners and champion, we wanted to take a few minutes to thank our volunteers. Clayton Koo, Sandy McCulick, Linda Flynn-McNesby, Sasha Saibi, Matt Driscoll, Sandy Leinbarger, Kate Armstrong, Anne Dejarnay, Melanie Aguas, Ladonna Barasa, Marilyn Newman, Kathy Kelly, who came back from retirement, just because I begged her. So thank you all, and I'm personally grateful again to be able to have facilitated the Spelling Bee this year. I would like to, at this time, turn the remaining portion of the presentation over to Mrs. O'Sullivan.
Thank you very much, Deena, and thank you for guiding me through this wonderful event. And I have the exciting and fun job of introducing our grade-level winners, as well as our champion district winner. Okay, some of our students are not here tonight, though. So for fourth grade, we have John Patrick Royaleis. So is John Patrick is here? Come on up. Good job, John Patrick. John Patrick's winning word was historical. Do you remember that? Okay. I'd like to introduce our fifth grade winner, Maya Chan. I'm not sure if Maya is here or not. Come on up, Maya. Come on over. Her winning word was travesty, right? Okay, I bet you've had lots of dreams about that word. Okay, unfortunately, Jenny Hu, who was our sixth grade winner from FDR with the word cheapskate. She's not here. She is not here tonight, unfortunately. Our seventh grade winner was Matthew Gutierrez from TRP. Come on up, Matthew. Your winning word was trifle. Okay. And last but not least, our eighth grade winner from FR was Emerald Wong. Come on up, Emerald Wong. And her winning word was petroglyphs? Okay. So again, we want to congratulate all our winners, and especially the trophy for our district champion, Matthew Gutierrez. Would you like to tell the board what your winning word was? Do you remember?
My winning word was bazooka.
Okay.
Spell it.
Big round of applause. Thank you very much. Congratulations to all the students. Thank you.
And we do have some certificates of appreciation, and we also have for our other speakers, which I was being specious and forgot about. So we'll give you for the Spelling Bee, and then we'll see our journalists again in a moment. So go ahead, Jen.
And we also have some dictionaries being presented by the Rotary Club, so.
Beautiful. Nice.
If you received them in third grade, maybe you can have two, but maybe if you weren't around in third grade, maybe you didn't get one, so.
I have one for John Patrick Royaleis.
Okay.
Okay. One for Maya Chan. Maya Chan? I have a card for Maya. Congratulations.
I have the certificate for Emerald Wong.
Two, Emerald. One for Matthew Gutierrez.
Our district champion.
District champion?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, Ms. Lakata can take the FDR.
Yeah.
Yes, you're accepting on behalf, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Lakata.
I bet he's a big basketball star, basketball fan. That's what he's doing.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And then I'm going to send you guys back down again to talk to our journalists, and let's have our, we'll come back to them, and we also like to offer our appreciation to the students who lead us in the pledge and who come and do special presentations. So we do have certificates for the students from Thomas Edison as well.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Anthony Nathan. Let's give all of our students, wonderful students in our district... Because we really do have the most amazing students here at Jefferson Elementary. Yes, I remember where we are.
Where are you?
Where are we?
I just want to say to both Ms. Dues and Ms. O'Sullivan, I spoke to quite a few of the volunteers that evening. They were first-time volunteers, and they were just so impressed by how things ran and their ability to be able to participate and contribute. So thank you for running this event for our students, and also for the volunteers who got to experience it.
So that's a huge job organizing it, and it does take a lot of volunteers, so I really appreciate doing that. I'm sorry I wasn't able to volunteer this year. No, I actually did. I missed it. It's fun to be at the Spelling Bee. It's unnerving to listen to them spelling words that I can't spell off, that I might lose without a pen and paper.
Well, in all fairness, sometimes the students just get kind of, maybe just the event itself, and as soon as they say a word, spell a word, they realize, oops, it's not right. But it's not about missing the word, but participating and just learning all the words that they have to study. They spend hours on that. So I just want to thank all the students that participate, as well as all the people that help them, teachers and parents.
I want to thank Ms. O'Sullivan. She was the speaker, and I was the judge, so she's very helpful, so thank you.
The pronouncer, right? Yeah. That's hard.
Okay. Our next section is communications. First, for persons wishing to address the board, this portion of the agenda is available for individuals to comment on or address the board on any issue that's under the board's jurisdiction and not on the agenda. The board may not discuss or comment on any items in this section. The maximum time allowed for any speaker is usually three minutes. And I have here, first off, Melinda Dart.
Thank you. Melinda Dart, AFT, 3267. With just a couple announcements, something very wonderful happened this week, and you may have heard. The governor, Jerry Brown, and union and legislative leaders all collaborated together to make a deal to raise the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour by January 1st, 2022. And research actually indicates, from UC Berkeley Center for Labor, that ninety-six percent of the affected workers are in their twenties or older, and three-quarters of the workers are in their thirties or older. And out of all these impacted workers, thirty-seven percent are parents. So we know that this action is long overdue, and that it's great that it's finally happening, and it's something that our union, as well as others, have worked on. So I'm very happy that that finally came to pass. And I'd like to say congratulations to all the students who did such a great job tonight, performing and sharing with us, and achieving in the Spelling Bee. And Elaine Francisco has charged me to remind everyone that we have a parent education night coming up at FDR. And it is, it's a special evening because it falls, this month is Autism Awareness Month, and this evening, on April 21st, at 6:00 p.m. at FDR, features a music behavior-certified therapist who will talk to the audience that night. So it's something that I'm looking forward to hearing about, and I do have flyers here for everyone. And I have some that I can put out, or pass around, or something like that.
Thank you, Ms. Dart. And Christina Novas on National Autism Awareness Month.
Sign language will be good. Just kidding.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name's Christina Novas, and I am a speech pathologist for the district. And I'm here to talk to you about Autism Awareness Month. This is National Autism Awareness Month, and I want to bring awareness to it. So autism is a spectrum disorder, meaning that individuals with autism have some challenges, but they can also have, like, great strengths, too. So I wrote just a little blurb that I wanted to read to you guys, if that's okay? So Autism Awareness Month is symbolized by a blue puzzle piece, or you'll see a ribbon with puzzle pieces in it, and that signifies how all these individual pieces or parts of a person make a whole. And we're all individuals, so those little parts of us that we are really good at, like, some are good at sports, like the Warriors, or some people are good at spelling, like our students, or writing, like our students from Thomas Edison, all those little bits and pieces make us who we are. And you might see these out in the community, so if you do, I want you all to take a second to acknowledge, like, I'm an individual, there are other individuals in the world, but we make up a community here in Daly City. So AutismSociety.org says that autism, like I said, is a spectrum disorder, meaning individuals with autism can vary greatly in their ability and challenges. And autism is really complex developmental disability. Signs typically appear in early childhood, and it's best to, if you have concerns or questions, to get your child checked by your pediatrician. It's a great place to start. Autism also affects individuals' ability to communicate, which is where I would come in as a speech pathologist, interacting with others, and can possibly affect learning language, difficulty with executive functioning, that's like planning, or being able to predict what might happen next, or inference. Individuals with autism might have intense interests, like lining up items, or puzzles, or airplanes, or trains, things like that. And they may use repetitive language, or motor mannerisms, have poor motor skills, lack eye contact, and have sensory sensitivities. So sensitivity to light, sensitivity to sound, touch, taste, and smell. So thinking again that individuals with autism may have some or all of these characteristics, our community really should come together to support and accept, and show acceptance of these individuals. And what I am working on is trying to get different community businesses to participate in National Autism Awareness Month. So I am working with Century Theaters to see if they'll host a sensory-friendly movie screening. So that's in the works. And what that would mean is, for our community members that have autism, or children with autism, or even adults with autism, if they're sensory-sensitive, then they might not like how loud movie theaters can get, or how dark and kind of creepy they can get. So I asked the movie theater, "Will you host us and keep the lights up, or keep the lights on, and make the volume less loud?" And they said that they would be willing to do that. So that's in the works. It should potentially happen on April 30th. So as that information comes out, I will be spreading it. And yes, so I would like everyone to just acknowledge National Autism Awareness. We are all individuals, but it's something that can bring us together, too. And lastly, as educators, I think a big message for us is that we're not here to cure anyone's autism. This is not something that goes away. We are here to plant seeds of knowledge, and who knows where it'll go? And that we are charged with all of these beautiful children, and eventually, they're going to be out in this community, so how can we affect that now? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Administrator comments? Quick, get your announcements out while there's still somebody to announce.
Sure. I just wanted to congratulate the Spelling Bee winners again. It was nice to see them. I was in the final round, Spelling Bee. I was a judge, and so, and I really appreciated Ms. O'Sullivan and Ms. Dues' coordination of the event, and being a judge with Mr. Koo as well. And then also, the Thomas Edison students, in the middle, we're working on the L cap draft right now, and all of these activities that we're talking about, you know, exemplify our goals, school climate, family engagement, improve student learning outcomes. And so I'm just really proud of all of our staff and students and what they're accomplishing. And while talking about the L cap next Wednesday, we're having a community meeting to look at a draft of the L cap for the 2016-17 school year. It's going to be at Ben Franklin at 3:30. So we're going to just share our first draft, and then we'll share it with the board. We're going to get feedback on the draft, and then we'll share it with the board in May.
So this Sunday, for, I guess only my third time in my time here in Jefferson, I attended the Honorary Service Award Tea, 1:00 in the afternoon. Thank you. 1:00 was perfect. 9:00 would have been tough. But it was really great to see so many different people I hadn't seen in a long time, different former colleagues, principals. Actually, a couple people didn't recognize me, because when I saw them last, my hair was about as long as Rebecca's. I still have the beard, though. But with that being said, it was just a great event, great spread. Marie did a great job as our emcee, moving around the different tables. And I even was reminded that I did win the Honorary Service Award back in 2002, so it was, I'll make sure I'll dig up my little pin. But it was a great time. Thank you.
May I jump in? I forgot to mention one thing. Literacy Day was this last Saturday, and Ms. Jessica Pace and Pat Bohm and their whole team coordinated a wonderful event. It was raining, and we still had a good turnout. Lots of organizations came and showed support for the community. And so I want to thank Ms. Pace and Ms. Bohm for all their hard work and their team. A lot of folks here were there, supporting it. So I want to thank everyone, and thank everyone for coming out.
Board member, acknowledging some commendations?
Just a quick one, acknowledgement. I was driving down South Gate, and I noticed, I believe, the trees had been cut by MP Brown School.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's been done in other parts of the district as well, but yeah, I noticed it. Could see more of the schools, so anyway, good job. Was that for safety, though, or?
Yeah, the tree program is related to safety. Many of those pine trees are, lifespan is fifty years old. They're beyond fifty years old, and with the drought, and there's an infested beetle that gets into them. And so we've been trying to be proactive, and we've been able to weather almost all the windstorms this season and not have any fall down, except one that happened on a Saturday night. But not during a school day.
All right, thanks. And that's it.
Well, I also, I attended Literacy Day the night before, or the afternoon before. I stuffed several hundred bags, I think. I'm not sure it was quite close to a thousand, but no. It was fun, and I got to kind of reunite with some folks I had not seen for a while, also volunteers. And what it is, is a lot of volunteers came from church, and they were delighted to be able to do something to help our students. And I know I've been sort of always saying, we need to find those organizations, whether it's a church, or whether it's a homeowner groups, or whatever it is, that is willing to come out and help and partner with the schools, because it helps a lot. So then also, we had, as you said, the Jefferson Council PTA, and we had, I think it was close to eighty people there. At least, that's how many responded. And it was considered cherry blossom, sort of like a Japanese tea affair. And it was amazing, the food that some of the volunteers brought in was great. So a lot of folks brought food in.
Daly City. Daly City style.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, it's like, I always say, you have to have more than enough, because if you don't have enough, you say, oh, gosh. So it was really nice, and it was nice to see, like you said, that some of retired people that came. One teacher who worked in our district for many years and retired, had never even attended one tea all the time. And she came, and she said, "I'll be back next year." She just saw so many people, and it was just so together. And we had a little girl that, I wish I brought my program to remember her name, but she did, she modeled a kimono, and she was cute, this could be, came from Garden Village School, you can brag about her, Ms. Casey. And also, we had a boy that did, he's in high school at Jefferson, and he did a presentation on karate. And it was just great to involve the children as well. And we had some children that wanted to come with their families to tea. Mr. Cadalas was there, and, I said, Valente. Names that sound alike, no. And we had a lot of members of the community, and we really enjoyed ourselves. So I hope next year, we'll get even more people there. And we had lots of teachers, and it was wonderful. So, other than, oh, I wanted to ask that we close the meeting in memory of Ms. Wyatt, who was Secretary for the City of Daly City Finance Department. And I know she's attended many events, even our schools, and I'd like to close in her memory. Jane, is there a name? Jane Wyatt? W-I-A-R-D. W-I-A-R-D.
No, okay. I'm glad you spelled that. Because I was doing it how I heard it.
I know. It's pronounced differently than what it's spelled.
Spelled, okay.
I also attended several of the events that was discussed earlier. I went to the Literacy Day Fair. In the past, I've been there as a volunteer, but this time, as a school member, it's a very different kind of perspective. It was amazing. There were so many booths and people there volunteering, and all the performances were great. So I just wanted to thank you again for your help on the event, as well as everybody else who helped out with the event. And I also was on Sunday at the Honorary Service Award Tea Ceremony. And thank you, Ms. Suela, for being the emcee for the event. It was great. There's more food than we could ever imagine, ever being there. And it was great to see people there that I've known from the past, as well as one of my teachers from Fernanda when I was a student there, and she recognized me. So it was great to catch up with people, and just thank and recognize all the people for all their work, from generations of volunteering and helping out with the school district.
Yeah, I want to add my thanks to all the people who made both of those events happen. Great events. Really nice to see at the literacy fair. That's moving toward our community schools idea. We had many community organizations there. We had representatives from the public libraries. And I'm drawing a blank. I remember going down the hall and noticing all these different organizations, and that they were there, reaching out to our students to let people see what are these services available in our community, which is what we want to be seeing. Like I say, thanks to the volunteers who made those things happen. The nice thing about that HSAT is that it's a chance to see and remember that ongoing tradition of volunteers in our school community, and how strong that is. And so, just many thanks to all of them, all the volunteers. Mr. Vidalis, any correspondence or comments?
Yeah, just a couple. So once again, it's just wonderful to see the way that some of these L cap funds are being utilized at the school site level. They were given to schools to identify the ways that they can creatively meet the needs of their students, and it's, they're doing a much better job than I can ever do in trying to decide what's going to work at this particular school. So as we get chances to highlight those programs, we'll bring them to the board, and bring them to other site principals as well, and site councils, to learn about what's happening. So thank you, Ms. Bell, for bringing the ROAR project, and for letting your staff sort of birth that, in a sense, at the school level. So as you've heard, this is the time of busy season of events. Every weekend, I'm sure there's an event happening, and many nights as well. Just wanted to say that this coming weekend is M.H. Tobias Carnival. They do have an auction of many highly valued items, if you're into those things. I think there's a web, you can bid on them online as well, so if you're not able to make it, you can peruse their catalog and see if you can make a bid online. And I also want to just update the board that I have started looking into the issue that I'm... that was brought before the board at the last meeting, this issue of the moving of the dispatch center to the county. I've gathered some information. I'm still waiting for some phone calls to be returned, but we'll provide that information to the board as I receive it and understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Vidalis. Okay, since, brings us to general functions. I have the consent agenda. Could we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And brings us to item F, Resolution 16-04-13A, Classified Administrative Professionals Day. The administration recommends adoption of this resolution designating April 27, 2016 as Classified Administrative Professionals Day.
Do we want a motion already? Okay, I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1604-13A, Classified Administrative Professionals Day.
Do I hear it?
Second.
On, on, excuse me, on April 27, 2016.
Second.
Got a second for Mr. Ali. Okay, this is a resolution, so let's have a...
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Mrs. Brizwella?
Aye.
Mr. Koo?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
I don't think there's any question that we want to acknowledge our, I mean, C-classified Administrative Professionals.
With special thanks for all the work that you do.
Yes.
So what, does it, does it include?
What, does it include? It's primarily the administrative support staff of administrators. So administrative assistance at the school site level, department level, throughout the district.
Okay.
Can we give them a hand or something?
Since we're at that item, I just want to recognize that Maria, thank you for all the times that I have to call you and ask you for something, for help.
Assistance to the board as well, so.
She is a sterling example of why we want to acknowledge them.
Yeah, yeah, but also anybody else that's in that role, and they also help when we call them. Thank you to all of them.
Okay. Item G, 2016-17 AFT Contract Proposal Sunshine and Schedule of Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on April 27, 2016 on AFT Local 3267, Contract Proposal for the 2016-17 school year. AFT is proposing to open negotiations on Article II, wages, Article III, hours of employment, Article IV, health and welfare, Article VII, oops, I'm sorry, that's Article VI, health and welfare, Article VII, leave provisions, and Article X, class size. The administration recommends acknowledging the receipt of and direct sunshining and distribution for public review of the contract proposal for 2016-17 by AFT Local 3267, as required by the Rota Act. So I believe all we need here is to make a motion to schedule that hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing to sunshine 2016-2017 AFT Contract Proposal and to schedule a public hearing.
Okay, on?
Oh, on, on, on April 27, 2016, which happens to be classified administrative, oops.
Yes, it does. Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, got a second from Mr. Koo. All those in favor?
Aye.
And there is no opposition. And a similar, item H, the 2016-2017 JESD Counter Proposal to AFT Local 3267, Sunshine and Schedule of Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on the JESD's counter proposal to AFT Local 3267 for the 2016-2017 school year on April 27, 2016. JESD is proposing to reopen negotiating, negotiations on Article II, wages, Article III, hours of employment, Article VI, health and welfare, and Article X, class size, and Article XIV, early retirement incentives, and discussion on contract language so that it can be updated to reflect revised laws. The administration recommends direct sunshining and time to receive public input, the JESD's proposal to AFT Local 3267 for the 2016 school year, as directed by the Rota Act. So we need a motion to do the direct sunshining and to schedule the, oh, actually, no, we don't, don't have to skip.
We do need to skip.
And to schedule the public hearing on the 27th also.
I'll make a motion that, that we approve the 2016-2017 JESD Counter Proposal for AFT Local 3267, Sunshine and Schedule a Public Hearing on April 27, 2016.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Number I, item I, Local Funding Initiative Polling Results Update. Representatives from TBWB will report on findings from polling of likely voters conducted by Godby and Associates on the month, during the month of February. The board will discuss next steps, further questions, and consider the local funding initiative exploratory committee's recommendation.
Yeah, we have here Jeremy, and later we'll have, we'll hear from Mr. Godby himself, so, who conducted the poll, so.
So I'm Jeremy Ozler from TBWB Strategies. We've been working with your district to determine the feasibility of a potential parcel tax measure. I was presenting in front of your board in February to give you an update on this process, and since then, we have actually completed the survey. We commissioned Godby Research, and so we're here tonight to present the results, and I'm going to turn it over to Brian, who's going to walk you through the news from our survey.
Thank you, Jeremy. Members of the board, I'm pleased to be here again this evening to talk to you about what the polling data tells us about a possible potential parcel tax measure. As you know, the purpose of the survey was to look at a variety of different areas. First of all, to look at perceptions of the district in terms of the quality of education, your management of public funds, and the perceptions for, the perception of the need for additional funding. We also looked at directly support for a parcel tax measure, and you'll see that a couple of times in the presentation. We looked at various programs and projects that you might fund with the proceeds from a parcel tax. We looked at both supportive and opposing arguments and statements about the measure. We also looked at various different rates and durations that voters might support the measure at. There are a variety of demographic and behavioral characteristics that we have cross tabs for. We won't go into those tonight since that's about a thousand pages and probably don't have that much time, exciting as they may be. And then there's also a question at the end where we'll address the awareness of the Jefferson High School versus the Jefferson Elementary School districts and the differences between them. In terms of the survey methodology, this was different than the survey we did for you four years ago when we could do telephone only. The world's changed. Landlines are being abandoned at tremendous rates. Cell phones are not necessarily on the voter file, although there are ways to match them. There are email addresses on the voter file, and there are also ways to match additional email addresses with the voter file, and so we are doing both a phone survey of landlines that are not disconnected yet, it's cell phones, and an email invitation to an online survey as a hybrid methodology, and we're finding great success with that in the last two years. We were, the universe is still voters, even though there's a component of matching from those different sources I mentioned at, has, and we looked at likely November 2016 voters. It's about 23,000 people in the district. We were in the field from February 19 through the 2nd of March. The average telephone survey was 20 minutes long. We don't know how long it takes online, but we do know that people take the survey 24 hours a day. They start and they stop, they start again and they stop and they finish, and the real point is that unlike the windows that were limited to calling people, they can take the survey anytime they want. So we're learning to communicate with them and the survey world on their timeframe, not on ours, and I think that's an important innovation. The average, or the sample size was 300. We did 59 online and 241 via phone, and that gives us an error rate of 5.62 percent plus or minus. Jumping in then to the key findings, the first section is that climate section where we talked about the district's quality of education, managing public funds, and need for additional funds. The way we look at each of these questions is similar. We asked people, do they have a very favorable, somewhat favorable, somewhat unfavorable, very unfavorable opinion, in this case of the district's quality of education. For analytical purposes, we aggregate the very and somewhat on each side of the equation together, so you can see in the box on the lower left-hand side, 46 percent had a favorable opinion, 11 percent had an unfavorable opinion. That's a positive to negative ratio of 3.9 to 1. That's actually a pretty good place to be. We've been successful with parcel tax measures as low as 1.9 to 1, so relatively speaking, you're in good shape. The thing that is important to note here, though, is there's also 42 percent who are not sure, and this is obviously a measure that we're talking about that would help the qual, fund the programs for the, to maintain the quality of education and improve it, and so these people need to understand where you are and that you're doing a good job. We can't leave 42 percent of the likely voters with a don't know on election day. The next question is, again, the favorable unfavorable with respect to the management of public funds and taxpayer dollars. Same sort of analysis here. We look at the total favorable or unfavorable, which here you see it's 45 percent in round numbers favorable, 16 percent in rounded numbers unfavorable. That's a 2.9 to 1 ratio, and that's also a pretty good place to be. We've been successful with parcel tax measures at .9 to 1, so you're clearly above that. But again, the same caveat is 40 percent are not sure, and this is really important because you're going to be asking them for more taxpayer funds, and so they need to have a feeling that you've done a good job. So there is work to be done to make sure these people know what efforts you've gone to in the past, to make sure both quality of education is as high as possible and that you're being prudent and fiscally responsible with their funds. The next question in this series was an agree/disagree statement, so it's a little bit different. Here, we're asking people, do you agree that the district needs additional funding to do its job providing a quality education? 69 percent in round numbers agree, when you add the strongly and somewhat together, that you need additional funds, and only 11 percent disagree. There's a much smaller not sure here, that's 21 percent in round numbers. Obviously, with the two-thirds requirement for parcel tax, it's important, again, that those people understand the needs of the district and not go to the polls on election day unsure. And again, to remind you, all of these questions we're asking are of people who are likely voters, so we're not talking about people who won't go to the polls. We're talking about people who will, in fact, vote in the presidential election. The next question switched gears and is our, the first of our ballot questions for the parcel tax measure, and you can see the wording that we asked on the right-hand side of the slide. It's designed to be as close as possible to what we might actually put on the ballot. It meets the 75-word limit that were required by state law to be within for any sort of ballot question of this nature, as well as having some other legal components to it that are important, and you can see in here, but it also talks about what we would do with the money, and those are highlighted by the bullets. We asked people, were they definitely yes, probably yes, probably no, definitely no, or not sure. Again, for analytical purposes and determined feasibility, we aggregate the definitives and probably's together, and you can see here that we have 72 percent in round numbers support, 71.7 to be specific, for a two-thirds measure. That's a great place to start, no question about that. There's 18 percent in round numbers that are no, and then another 10 percent that are not sure. Obviously, those 10 percent are up in the air. If we look back to the 2012 survey, which you'll remember, we used in advance of the bond, we did actually a split sample then. Half of the respondents, we talked about a parcel tax, half of them we talked about a bond, and the board decided to put the bond measure on the ballot. But when we look at the numbers in that survey for the parcel tax, you can see that it was 71.8, and we're now 71.7. Those numbers are indistinguishable from each other from a statistical perspective, so I would say that they are virtually identical. The thing that I think is important to note here is there's still a 5.62 percent error rate, so, you know, our 72 percent in round numbers really could be as low as 66, which is just a little bit below the two-thirds threshold at 66.6667. So there's work to be done, and it's important to note that that work needs to focus on that 30 percent that is probably yes. Well, we asked them, would you vote yes or no, and they said yes, and particularly on the phone, they said yes first, then probably yes. They're still not definitive, and we need to make sure that on election day, those people stay on board. So that is, in fact, the challenge that we have in front of us. It's the challenge for a permissible public information effort by the district, and then there needs to be, obviously, an independent campaign group that comes together outside of the district itself to, to make sure that those people stay on board. But it's a great place to start. The next set of questions was a variety of items that you see summarized on the left-hand side of the slide. They were asked in a random order, and we asked, we read the items, said, for example, if you knew the money would go to attract, retain, and train high-quality teachers, would you be much more likely, somewhat more likely, somewhat less likely, much less likely to support the measure? When we're done with the interviewing, we go back and assign the numeric values that you see across the bottom of the slide, 2, 1, 0, minus 1, minus 2, so it gives us a scale that runs from a bottom of minus 2 up to a plus 2, and it's a very nuanced way to prioritize all of these different items. If we were to just add the much more likely's and somewhat more likely's together, we might get a bias that is best explained if you, one could be 40 percent much more likely and 10 percent somewhat more likely. That adds up to 50 percent. You could also have something that is 10 percent much more likely and 40 percent somewhat more likely. That also adds up to 50 percent. It's not the same 50 percent. That bias is taken out of this, this mean score, as we call it, abstract as it may seem. It's much more influential in terms of prioritizing these items. We also look at a .2 difference from high to low to define the tiers that you see here, and what that really means is that while there are numeric differences, essentially, anything in a tier is statistically tied. Now, when you're putting together communications effort and trying to explain people about this measure, you need to put one thing in front of the other. You can't say, oh, there's eight things that are tied, so numeric order is the best way to do that, but realizing that essentially they're tied statistically. In our top tier, we again have, at the highest level, attracting and retaining high-quality teachers at 1.44. That also equates to 86 percent at least somewhat more likely when we add the two together. Protect core academics at 1.40, again, virtually the same level. Maintain literacy instruction to help struggling students at 1.35. Hands-on science learning opportunities, 1.32. Keep schools safe and well-maintained, 1.31. Provide after-school and summer school programs, 1.25. Enhance art, music and art classes, 1.25. And then finally, in the top tier, upgrade classroom computers and instructional technology, 1.25, which equates to 82 percent at least somewhat more likely. So you can see how closely related these are, both in terms of the mean scores as well as the raw percentages that they're based on. Good news is, in that top tier, everything is above 80 percent, so that's wonderful. Those are great things that the voters are very supportive of you spending their, their funds on. The second tier, which I won't read in detail, is also very positive, but it's just clearly not as positive as the first tier. It ranges down to 73 percent, so everything on this list is well above the two-thirds level necessary to pass a parcel tax measure, and that's great news, and we've got a lot of good things to work with. The next slide looks much the same. It's a bit different question. This is supportive statements, so these are things that are perceived as being positive. Because of that, you'll notice the scale is a little different. It's, there's no less likely side of this equation, because it doesn't make sense to somebody who identifies something as a positive, that that would make them less likely to support the measure. So what we've done is we've taken out the scale on the negative side, and it's the much more likely two, somewhat more likely one, no effect zero. And what that means is we can still rank these things in a very nuanced fashion. We can still define the tiers the same way we did before. You just can't compare these scores apples to apples with the previous question because it's just a different response category. In our top tier here, ranging from one point five-three down to one point three-three, we have a lot of items as well. Some of them are accountability measures, some of them are academically related. First one, all money raised by this measure will be controlled locally, and the rest of that, which doesn't fit on the slide, is and cannot be taken by the state. One point five-three equates to eighty-four percent in round numbers, at least somewhat more likely to support the measure. So that's very highly supported. All students deserve equal access to a quality education. Protect quality academic instruction in core subjects. Our elementary, middle schools are among the lowest-funded in the county. Requires independent citizens' oversight and audits, another accountability measure. Support for strong after-school programs help keep kids out of trouble. All students from different areas of the district get the same opportunities. No money for administrator salaries, another accountability measure. Will provide training and planning time for teachers and guarantees dollars for Daly City, Broadmoor, and Colma schools equally. This top tier ranges, as I said, from eighty-four percent down to seventy-five percent, at least somewhat more likely. So again, well above the two-thirds threshold necessary to pass a measure. Lots to work with in that- that group. The second tier ranges then down to sixty-nine percent, at least somewhat more likely, at that one point one-eight ranking. Again, positive, above the two-thirds, but just clearly not as influential as the top tier. At that point in the survey, we've talked about the ballot question. They've had an introduction to it. They've- we've talked about all the things that we might spend the money on. We've talked about the positives. So we come back to them with the ballot question a second time, and basically, this tells us what happens if, in a world where there was no opposition. You may not live in that world, unfortunately, but it's important from an analytical perspective to know what happens when people hear all the positives and what we're going to spend the money on. And you can see here that the support goes up, six and a half percent in aggregate on the yes side. And in fact, the definitely yes goes from forty-two percent to fifty-one percent, which is certainly a good numerical change. Statistically significant, but it is certainly going the right direction and what we like to see. The next set of questions was the opposition statements, because we do live in a world where not everyone agrees. And so we've asked several negatives as well. The methodology here is the same as it is for the positives. We don't put a minus sign in front of the numbers to make them seem bad. The higher they are, the worse they are. And in tier one, we have items such as the school district has too many high-paid administrators. Things don't have to be true to be on this list. They just have to be things that an opposition candidate campaign might say. And that point-eight equates to forty-nine percent at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. So we know that that's potential negative, and we've got to have a counter to that. And we know from the positives that none of the money for administrators is the way you deal with that kind of accountability. The state is putting a measure on the ballot to renovate, build, and repair schools. That's the nine-billion-dollar school bond that's going to be on the statewide ballot in November. State politicians are asking for sales tax and income tax increases. When we did this, that was the son of Prop 30. It's actually now, we know, just an income tax extension. It's not an increase, but that's the Prop 30 extension, essentially. The average homeowner is already paying more than six hundred dollars a year in extra taxes to the school district, and we can't trust the school board to spend the dollars the way they promised. Again, these things don't have to be true. They just have to be things that the opposition might say. The top tier ranges then from point-eight to point-seven-three, or forty-nine percent at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure, down to forty-five percent. Clearly above the one-third necessary to defeat a measure. So we have to take these things seriously and have counters to them. I don't think it means that we don't focus on what we know are the important things, but we need to be aware of that. And then the final item is the money will just be used to increase teacher salaries, and that point-six-four, while it's in the second tier, is just thirty-nine percent at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. So not as negative as the others. So now that we have talked about what we're going to spend the money on, the positives and the negatives, we come back to a final test of our ballot question to see what's happened. And because we're interested in finding out sort of what the upside is, we also find out what the downside is. And what I mean by that is, this question is immediately preceded for every voter by the negatives. So this is probably a little more negative than the real world, because in the real world, some of the people get the positives first, some of the people get the negatives first, and that has an impact on what happens when they walk in on the election booth. This is probably the more conservative estimate. But what it says is that even after we saw those negatives, which are pretty powerful, we are still at the same seventy-one point nine. It's two-tenths of a percent higher. That's virtually distinguishable statistically, so we're at the same point that we started at. We are, though, at a higher point among the definitely yeses. It's not, again, statistically significant, but it is certainly something we'd like to see, and we're basically seven points in round numbers higher than we were at the initial test in the definitely yes. That is a good sign. It still means, though, that there's that twenty-three percent that are probably yes, that there needs to be information for. And we talked about them understanding the quality of education and the- the good job you're doing, spending taxpayer dollars, those sorts of things, as well as what we plan to do with the measure. Now, that's a great place to be on our second test, and certainly suggests moving forward. When we put together the questionnaire, we didn't know we would wind up there. So we had a couple fallback questions. The first was from half of the sample that didn't say definitely yes, and we then asked them, well, what if it was just fifty-eight dollars instead of sixty-eight? And you can see here that the total support doesn't actually move up, and the definitely yes only goes up a little bit. So moving from sixty-eight to fifty-eight really doesn't have an impact on support for the measure and suggests that you could stay at sixty-eight and become- that's a comfortable place. Now, we also asked the other half what you thought if it was seven years instead of nine years. And here, we again see not much of a difference, a little bit of a jump in total support, but we do see three point three percent increase in the definitely yes. So it's even stronger than our stronger- strongest point on that third test. So people are actually more- a little more susceptible to the sunset than they are to the tax rate. Again, we didn't know how far we would need to go down, but we also had an alternative that was five years. And again, you see an increase to seventy-five percent in total support. And then in definitely yes, we're up to fifty-two point nine, which is four points higher than we were in that third ballot test. So there does seem to be some advantage to going a little bit shorter if you're in a cautious mood and want to be more conservative, but we probably don't have to do that. We were in pretty good shape to start with. The last question that we have also highlights the information needs that have to happen, and it asks people on whether the high school and elementary districts are run by the same district or agency. And what we find here fascinating is a third, thirty-two point four percent, say they're separate districts. Those are the people that are correct. The rest of the population either don't know and just said that, not sure at thirty-four percent, or thirty-three point six, thirty-four in round numbers, said they are the same district. So those people have misinformation. So I think it's important that people not go to the polls on election day thinking this is the same district as the high school and thinking- and not understanding what you've done for the quality of education and not understanding what you've done to manage taxpayer dollars. Those things are important information that needs to get out to them. By way of summary, and I won't go through all of the bullets, it's for your reading pleasure later, but clearly, on our ballot tests, at seventy-two, seventy-eight, and seventy-two, again, we're in pretty good shape for a November measure. You know, there's a limit to how high you can get on any parcel tax, and most of them just win narrowly. So this would be a narrow win. In terms of the features of the measure that are, again, bulleted below, but we looked- talked about earlier, there's probably some that suggest here that we might tweak the ballot question if the board would decide to put this measure on the ballot. And then there are a variety of positives which start on this side of this slide and then go on, that would be important to help people understand what this measure is about, as I mentioned earlier. But in summary, we think that, given the two-thirds requirement and the election opportunity that we have in front of us, that the district should begin the process to prepare for that, placing a measure on the ballot, and then the board will have to make a decision sometime over the summer. The deadline is August 12th, and Jeremy will talk more about that in his presentation comments. So I think this is a great report, green light, and you should be moving forward. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions from board members? I thought that was- that was very encouraging. You know, the biggest concern is that confusion between us and the high school district with the high school district floating a parcel tax-
Parcel tax renewal, right.
-in this coming election.
Right.
I knew people were confused. I didn't realize it was quite that widespread.
It always has been, even when it's not an election thing like this. Even just thinking, oh, there are two districts? Because the name is the same, except for elementary, and then the other one is union. So I think they think union is being unified, but it's not. So there is some confusion, but-
And it is understandable. It would have helped if we called ourselves, you know, I don't know, George Washington or something.
But anyway. And the only thing I see is that on the ballot measures, is that what you- on the slide there when you had? There. Is that what you- it's not finalized, though. Is that what you-
That's not finalized. That would- and I think certainly the list of features and the priorities that we tested suggests that we might tweak the bullets a little bit in this, and we'd come back, should the board want to move forward with this, with a final recommendation on what the ballot question-
Only thing I see, and it's sort of like just the way it's worded, is it says that all funds for Daly City, Broadmoor, and Colma Elementary and Middle Schools. Colma doesn't have any schools. However, if you turn it around by saying the students attending or-
Or the schools serving Daly City, Broadmoor, Colma.
I don't want to put it in the exact wording, but you got your- you got my jest of this because there is no schools in Colma. But there are children that live in Colma that attend our schools.
One of the things we looked at was that what actually is a stronger statement is funds for our local elementary and middle schools. That that was a stronger statement with the voters versus listing the cities.
Yeah, that's right. I did see that on the-
Yeah, so it actually-
But I have to disagree on that a little bit because people that prefer voting for Daly City, they don't think that people in Broadmoor can vote.
Yeah, I'm just saying that that's what tested at a higher rate than- than listing out the cities, so I'm not assigning a value.
How did that get rated?
I forget exactly what it was, but it was a higher rated value than listing out the city names.
Yeah, it was an informational statement. It was all local schools deserve equal access to a quality education. That got a one point four-seven on the mean score ranking. And then the measure will ensure that Daly City, Broadmoor, and Colma students get the same opportunities as students in neighboring cities. Little bit different. That got one point three-six.
Is it because of saying Daly City, Broadmoor, and Colma, or is it about what is inside the whole statement?
Yeah, as I say, my take is just is that it's, you know, one of them is kind of an easier, more accessible statement, in a sense, about our students, that all students deserve.
And I think what it could be, and we've seen this elsewhere, too. There's another item in there that's measure guarantees funding for Daly City, Broadmoor, and Colma schools regardless of the outcome of state measure. That's a little lower. Now, that's an entirely different item, but I think what- when you say local schools, I know what my local school is, and I don't have to share with those other places that I don't live. But local means my school to everybody, right? So it- maybe it's just an easier and more accessible term, as you said.
Yeah, and then, yeah, because I think the other can raise the question, well, who are these Colma school, you know, who are these, you know, other communities? I want my community.
Right. I'm just interested in my community. And all politics is local.
Right. Semantics is an amazing study.
And we also have some children that live in Pacifica that go to our schools.
Right.
That's right, yeah.
But they, yeah. So another- another way to avoid getting anybody feeling left out.
Yeah, exactly.
The three blocks of Pacifica.
That's right.
But anyway.
Okay.
But they vote, yes.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Godby?
No.
Okay. Turn it back to Jeremy.
Okay. A couple more slides, and then I-
I think we'll need about two or three minutes more.
Two quick slides. Just want to discuss the next steps for you guys.
And then I do have one public comment part.
No, it's just hidden. She's changing the slide.
Okay.
All right. So now that we've received the positive news from Brian, I wanted to kick up, we need to discuss some next steps with you guys. And so first, I'd like to reiterate the recommendation that a sixty-eight-dollar parcel tax for nine years is feasible. And at that rate, back-of-the-envelope calculations, that would generate about one point two million dollars annually in local funding for your school district. So we think that's important. But in terms of next steps, we think initially, now until June, we should really focus our outreach and really telling the good- the good news and the story and the plan to pursue parcel tax funding, if that is the route you decide to go. We think that outreach should focus first on internal stakeholders, your PTAs, bargaining units, teachers in those closest to the schools for two reasons. First, after June, everyone goes on summer vacation, and it's really hard to wrangle everyone together, and we think now is a really important opportunity to seize that audience. And second, as was already mentioned, the high school district is pursuing a parcel tax election of their own, and ballots mailed for that election on May ninth, and we really want to not muddle the message. We want to be good partners to that district. We also seen the slide that Brian presented, there's a lot of confusion between the high school district and the elementary school district, and we think that communicating during a time when they're communicating is not- is not wise politically. And so we want to focus from now until June on that internal community. On June 22nd, we- we want to present a draft resolution to you for feedback. A part of that resolution would be the seventy-five-word statement that we- we just discussed, and assuming that we can tweak, but also the full resolution that includes every project or program that a parcel tax could fund. We only have seventy-five words in that statement to state programs, and there's a lot of legal language that you saw that we have to include. But in the full resolution, we can flesh out in a little bit more detail what exactly your parcel tax would fund. In early July, we proposed sending an informational mailer to all registered voters outlining the plan to pursue local funding and also inviting them to your July 27th board meeting when we would actually adopt a resolution. The reason we do that is for a few reasons. We really want to, in those first two slides that Brian presented, we want to take that slice of the pie, that forty percent slice that did not know how to rate your district, and we want to shrink that. We want them to know that you have some great programs going on, but we also want them to know that you are pursuing local funding and help them understand how that might help you address your needs in your district. And this next slide just kind of summarizes this process that we're going to undertake over the next few months. As you can see, August 12th is the county deadline to adopt a resolution to qualify for the November ballot. So over these next few months, we're going to work first to- to build consensus around a measure when- when two-thirds voter approval is required. It's not enough just to have an us-against-them mentality. It's really about building community consensus behind a measure, both in your internal stakeholder community that is connected to your schools intimately and casting a wider net into the external community that might not be as tuned in to the day-to-day operations. And then from there, we will actually build a strong measure for the ballot. As you guys know, a district cannot advocate for or against a parcel tax measure, but there are certainly steps that you can take to build a strong measure that is set up for an independent advocacy campaign to take over and run with. So with that, I'll open up forward. Any questions about next steps or process?
We decided to, excuse me, go forward with the feasibility study. I don't recall us deciding that we were going after a parcel tax and not a bond measure. Am I wrong? Or we-
No, it was a feasibility study for a parcel tax.
It was only for parcel tax?
Yes, yeah. Because we're- we're at our limit right now with bond capacity.
All right. No, I don't have any questions, yeah.
So we're doing all- some of this action stuff during the summer, when some folks are away.
Yeah. No, we work with that.
So unfortunately, we're required by law to adopt a resolution before August 12th.
Oh, I realize that.
And so it's- this is going to be a process that school districts and cities and counties- throughout the state of California are going to be going through at a similar time. It's also why we think it's really important to send that informational mailer in July to all registered voters, so that they know this is a transparent process and that community involvement is a part of it. So that, that's why we aim to do that, and it's just the reality of the election schedule that you need to adopt before that August 12th deadline.
When you list that you're sending it out to all registered voters and parents?
And parents.
Aren't they, aren't the parents already, I mean, is that because some parents are not registered voters?
Exactly.
Okay. So we'll make sure. Okay, well.
The only question that comes to my mind, is that rhetorical one, is, am I the only person who finds it strange that we can put a ballot measure on the ballot, but we're then not allowed to support it?
No, no. It would've been a case against a school district, so we don't want to do what they did.
I know, I know.
We can support it, we just can't spend money on it.
We can't spend money.
Actually, resources, actually, time.
Any district resources whatsoever.
We can support it as individuals.
Yes.
We can't support it as a board.
Right.
But again, like I said, there are steps that, in providing information about a potential measure, and building the strongest measure possible for the ballot, and this is the process that we found works well, and, and is one that your district can follow in order to put a strong measure on the ballot.
So the one that you're sending out to the, all the registered voters and parents, is that an informational kind of thing of where we're at?
Strictly informational.
Yeah, we've done that before.
Yeah, and we actually did that with your district last fall. It would be a similar, of similar nature, it would, there'd be more information obviously now about the fact that you're considering pursuing local funding, and there would be an invite, a formal invite to the board meeting whenever it is, we had targeted the July 27th meeting, it would be an invite to the entire community to attend that hearing so that they could voice their opinion on a local funding.
So the next steps for us, and for, as a board, is that I would engage in a series of conversations to determine what the next steps would look like beyond the feasibility study, and then I'd come to the board at a future meeting to approve moving forward or not moving forward in that direction with, with the information we gather.
I just have a, just a question about the confusion between the two districts, and how much of a, I mean, how much that's going to weigh on whether people are going to vote for this or not, because before I was on the board, and I know Ms. Brizwell can speak to this, we went after a parcel tax and it didn't pass. So that's still in my mind. Because we don't have a overwhelming majority of people that are giving us a favorable response, according to the survey, is just something that I'm thinking about. So I don't know if any, anyone else up here is thinking about that.
Well, I'm thinking about that, and I'm thinking that what they're saying about the communication is part of what we need, what we're doing with that is positioning ourselves, we are the elementary district, they are the high school district, you know, to, because obviously, a big chunk of what we need to do is to educate people to recognize that we have two school districts in our community, and they both need support. And that, yes, that does take a chunk out of, out of the homeowners.
And how much is the high school district trying to ask?
I should know.
Yeah, they're sending me emails.
I know, they're sending me emails.
It's $60.
Sixty?
Sixty.
Okay, thank you.
And there's this nine years, too?
There's this 10, I believe.
The reason why I'm concerned, though, is because they're communicating before us, so I understand the separate communication, but if they're getting the head start and we're going to come after them, I just-
It's a worry, and that was part of, I think, what we ran into last time, too.
I think that they, they are also aware that there's confusion around the different names of the districts, at least in Daly City. It may not be so clear in Pacifica, or Brisbane, or Bayshore, where they also serve, but they do know that they need to distinguish themselves as a high school district, and I'm sure, and I haven't looked at their polling data to see, but I'm sure that they also have a close to 40% of folks who are not sure. So there does need to be a lot of communication, so we can share that information with them, with their campaign committee, to make sure that they are aware of that name confusion.
I, I actually have seen their polling.
Okay.
As you might guess.
All right.
And I think one of the things that, while it is a $60 measure, it's a renewal of 48, and, and I think it's quite clear that they will be talking about this as a $12 increase. So they're not going to, so they're not going to be positioning you as coming after a $60 increase, it's just 12. They're going to tell everybody 12, 12, 12, that's pretty clear.
And I would also add that it's really why we think the communication over the summer is important, and we would recommend that that communication be very explicit in, for example, including photos of elementary and middle school students, which everyone loves anyways, they respond well to that, but also making very clear that this funding is for local elementary and middle schools. And also, to your point about confusion and them asking for money in June, I think we found in our research in other districts that voters actually have a relatively short memory, and by the time that November comes around, November's going to be a very, very noisy election for many reasons. If you guys are watching CNN at all, you might understand why, but we think that, that buffer is, is manageable.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and I do want to call our one speaker card, Melinda Dart.
Yes, thank you, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267. I believe the time is now or never to try to pass a parcel tax for our district, and the reason is because this election in November is going to have an incredible turnout, and I believe it's going to be a better turnout than the election in June. And I have a very good memory of the parcel tax that didn't pass. I still wake up and think about it at 3:00 in the morning, and that parcel tax didn't pass in 2008. It was the world's worst timing for running a parcel tax. People were telling us they lost their jobs when we were calling them to ask them to support it, and it was a mail-in ballot only, and it was only, it was the only item on that ballot, and they had to find it and mail it in. And even then, we, we didn't, we didn't completely, you know, fail, we, I mean, we failed, but we failed at the rate of something like 55%, I think.
It was very huge.
Which was, which was better than you would expect in an election like that.
We were at 65, 65%.
Oh, 65.
Apparently missing it.
Oh, okay, okay. So in other words, even then, people loved their schools and wanted to support them, but everything was stacked against that election. Everything is aligning for this election in, in what, as far as I can see, and I think we just have to start now saying that, you know, the high schools are promoting a parcel tax right now, and we wish them well, and we hope that they achieve their goals, but what they get does not help us at all in the elementary schools, and they're extending something they've already had, but we have never had a dedicated funding stream from our community to support the public education here in our community, and we have to have it, because we can't count on the fluctuations of the state, and, and we need our community to support our schools, because the, the schools make the community, right? So, and I think they recognize that, we can tell that in the polling results, so, so we need their support, and, and if you work it out to how much it is per day, it isn't all that much, you know, when you spread that out over a year, so, you know, it, it's something that if we get a little bit from every homeowner, seniors are exempt, right? It doesn't hit any senior citizen. If we get a little bit from every homeowner, it can make a huge difference in supporting our schools. So I say, be brave and go for it.
All right.
Well, I think that we're probably at the, like you say, a good, a good spot, because I think we have more people that we can bring in to help pass the, last time we didn't have signs, now we should have signs. There's a lot of things we should do that we didn't do last year, I mean, not last year, but last time, and I think that-
We have Facebook now, too.
Yeah, we have Facebook. We also, I think, I mean, thanks to AFT for all the programs that you've been putting together, gathering parents together, I think we're at a different place there where I think parents want to support, and they want to do it, so, you know, I'm just saying, I hate doing it in the summertime, because I know people are gone, but, yeah, I agree with you, we have to do it, and you can't wait till September when they get back, because it's too late.
Yep.
So, now, there was a comment that was made by the high school district trustees that wanted our support, and they said, you help us, we'll help you. I'll remember that, because they'll all come and help us, too. So, yeah, I, I agree with you. We should go for it.
Okay, well, we will eventually hold a vote on that.
Yeah, I'll bring it back.
Don't miss that July 27th meeting, anybody.
Yeah, okay, so that brings us to item D under curriculum and instruction, English Language Development Updates. Mr. Benjamin Moser, English Language Development, ELD Program Director. Anna Garcia, ELD Instruction Coach, and Patty Viskara, ELD TIG Teacher, will provide an overview of the annual measurable achievement objectives, California English Language Development Test, SALT Test, and the supplemental ELD Pilot Program, and good heavens.
More reading, Lucy.
More reading.
How do you like those booklets?
Wow.
I know.
That's a new folding copy machine. So, good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight with my colleagues as we provide an overview from the English Language Development Department. As usual, let's begin with the data before any decisions happen, or we want to look at where children are. So as you know, state and federal law requires that school districts administer a test for English language proficiency and to meet annual measurable achievement objectives, the AMAOs. AMAO1 refers to the percentage of English learners making progress by moving up one language proficiency, at least one language proficiency each year. So the target was 60 and a half percent, and you will see that we met that in JESD with AMAO2 is broken into two subgroups, so this refers to the percent of English learners attaining English proficiency as measured by SALT, and this one is referring to fewer than five years, and this cohort contains English learners who have been in a language instruction program for less than five years. And once again, if we look at the target, 24.2%, and our, we definitely met that with As I mentioned, AMAO2 is broken into two groups, and this is the second piece, and this is for, this cohort contains English learners who have been in language instruction programs for more than five years. And once again, you can see that we did meet our targets at a district level. So let's look at data in a different manner, and that is, what I'd like to do is compare the results of last year's California English Language Development Test to this year's results. The green portion of the pie chart refers or represents students who have moved up one or more proficiency levels. The yellow represents students who have stayed at the same proficiency level, and the red represents students who have dropped a proficiency level. So you'll see, it's pretty flat. So based on this data, we have questions, which are, what are our next steps as a department and as a district? And from my department, of course, we're looking at, how can we best prepare our teachers with a really rigorous and interesting curriculum for our students? And so with that, I'd like to now turn it over to Anna Garcia, who's going to walk us through the next section.
Can I ask a quick question?
Of course.
What would, I, I, I'm trying to figure out what would make someone go down a level in their proficiency, is it that when they go up to the next grade level, the test is different?
Yes, so the, it's, the test is in span, so anybody in TK through first grade, they are given the same test. Now, it's scale scored, so if you're a TK, you don't have to have as high a score as a first grader, but then second grade has their own test, and what I hear from the examiners, that is a very difficult jump for the second grade group. Then it's third through fifth, and then sixth through eighth. But I will say, what do I do with this? I mean, this is district results. I look at my colleagues in the audience, I break this down by school, I visit with all the principals, and I say, let's put a name to each one of these students. So we're not talking numbers, these are, these are students.
All right.
All right, good evening. So when we start thinking about our next steps, the first step is always to think about, who are my students? Before instruction begins, before any lesson planning begins, we ask ourselves two fundamental questions, who are my students, and what is their proficiency level? And these terms, emerging, expanding, bridging, are the new terms in the new ELD standards. And to sort of exemplify these proficiency levels, I'm going to walk you through a familiar story, and you'll just have to put sort of your thinking caps on, as we exemplify what these different proficiency levels look in action. So what would you say? Beginner, intermediate, advanced?
I mean, for that story?
Well, just for this phrase, grammar. How about if we compare it to that one, right? And you can start to see, perhaps a newcomer, a beginner, we have one-word utterances, but already at the second SALT level, we see two simple sentences, we see the introduction of a past tense helping verb, some adjectives, right? And here we have students at the expanding level. And again, you can see introduction of dialogue, some comparing adjectives, like hairier than, right? And here you can see, obviously, more advanced English.
To the ears.
Right? That sort of abstract although, again, the past tense, we see some cause and effect language, because, so you can see how students, there's a lot to learn as you acquire language, and you can see increasing sentence complexity. And finally, we have students that are bridging to English, and you can see that this is quite challenging, it's singular possessive, vocabulary, facial hair, and my favorite, the should-have-been, the modal auxiliary verb with the past participle. How's that? Isn't that fun? All right. I can geek out on grammar. Right, okay. So, wanted to introduce the way that ELD looks, or how we approach it in Jefferson, and we have two sort of main ways that we look at ELD, integrated ELD and designated. So integrated on the left, content instruction, the content standards are front and center. We say the content standards are in the driver's seat, but obviously, to be able to comprehend and access science, social studies, math, students need to be supported in their language. So language is not ever separate from the content, it's just secondary to those content standards. Designated ELD is a targeted, dedicated time where students are grouped by their proficiency level, that emerging, expanding, bridging that we talked about, and during designated ELD, students are explicitly taught English language patterns, some grammatical structures, vocabulary, it's very explicit and very targeted to their proficiency level. Down at the bottom, you see some of the curricula that's used in Jefferson, and for example, CM over on the left, constructing meaning, is an example of integrated ELD, mostly used in our middle schools, where teachers, science and social studies teachers, support their language learners in that content. This year in designated ELD, we are piloting a new program called CIC ELD. This year in designated ELD, we are piloting a new program called CCLD. And CCLD emphasizes functional language, meaning what is the purpose of language students need? And the goal is to build instructional routines for teaching and providing opportunities to practice language orally and written. So, teachers focus on, again, explicitly teaching language patterns, grammatical structures, and vocabulary with really intentional, built into the lesson, opportunities for students to try out the language, play around with the language, and ultimately fluently speak and write. So, I'd like to introduce Patty, who's going to show some CCLD in action.
Hi, good evening. I'm Patty Viscara. I'm a TIG teacher at JFK Elementary, and I have had the pleasure of piloting the CCLD program this year. So, I have been working with fifth graders at their intermediate level, and we're working on a unit called How's the Weather? The goal of the unit is to ensure that students gain the necessary language needed to talk, to discuss the weather and different weather situations such as hurricanes, tornadoes, and storms. So, I'd like to go ahead and show you, they're broken down into four different weeks, and each week ends with an assessment. So, this is the first week, week one, and it's the assessment. So, these are, this slide shows the language that we're targeting during this week, and the assessment, let me jump to, is a paper copy for the first week, and it's made up of five questions. This is an example of the first question. What I did was I gave my class, my fifth graders, the paper assessment and asked them to answer all five questions. After that, day two, we decided to make it a little more interesting and enhance the assessment by including integrating technology. And I was able to use what I learned at the professional development in January with Tony Barone and Jennifer Ewen, using a green screen effect. So, it was fun, the kids had fun, and I'd like to share that with you. This is the app that we used and that Tony and Jennifer had presented at the professional development. It's called Green Screen by Do Ink, and it works on iPad. Very simple to use, very quick and easy, and the kids loved it. So, I'm going to go ahead and click onto the next link, and it should start the video so you can see the students having fun.
What is the weather going to be like this week? What should you wear?
You should wear layers of coats as snow, because it's going to, to snow all week.
So, that was the first question. Each pair of students were assigned a question. So, we have an example of a second question. This was a second question that you can see we're now targeting the region and what, what it will be like in the future.
What's the weather going to be in the Pacific region tomorrow?
It's going to be chilly in the Pacific region tomorrow, and we expect heavy, heavy wind for the rest of the week.
So, those are just two of the examples. We had actually a total of five, but we don't want to be here all night because we want to go see the Warriors. And so, we end with that, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask any of us.
I don't have any questions, but it looks like a lot of fun. And actually, when I was in college, meteorology was one of my favorite classes.
Really?
Yeah.
My husband will be pleased to hear that. That's what he teaches.
Oh, cool, all right. Yeah, and I, I did learn, though, that, that industry uses technology more than any other industry. Everybody all over the world always wants to know what the weather is, and they're monitoring it constantly. So, anyway, I like how you utilize that for the instruction. And it's, I actually reminded me of the first presentation we had with the journalism class.
That's right. And I think that's a good point to make because the CCLD program targets different units of interest for the students. We did a desti- as destination.
Yeah, virtual field.
Virtual field trip. And for example, we, that class, we, we visited the beach. And we, we used the same effect with the beach, so you can imagine what they were doing.
Having a good time. So, yeah, keep up the great work. I mean, I always love whatever you, you know, present and show us, and I really liked sentence frames, I'm big on that. And so, anyway, keep it up.
Yeah. So, is this, this same program going on in many of the schools, or what?
So, we have this at, boy, not all of our schools. We have, I believe, nineteen teachers. You know, I looked at, you know, what schools have, all schools have a great need, but really, what schools could benefit most and have a cohort that we could work with some teams? And so, we're looking at expanding this next year and bringing on another group.
Great, great. Sounds good.
So, yeah, and the purpose behind the pilot year is to just to figure out, you know, what, what level of support do the teachers that are implementing this more complicated form of English language development, and what level of support is needed, what resources might be needed? I think they're finding great success, and so they, they have become sort of ambassadors for the program, and so, and talking to others about the effects. And I think when Mr. Moser and I would discuss this, is we, we selected some of the schools that had kids who would be stalling, so the kids who had the large, more, most yellow, the schools that had the most yellow, kids who don't move necessarily from one level to the next. And I think as Ms. Viscara, she's a good example, the, the students tend to stall at that intermediate level. And so, instruction that you're getting from Ms. Viscara, the next round of SALT, they're going to be able to demonstrate, you know, knowledge of these future tenses and all of these different ways of expressing themselves that they didn't have perhaps fluently before. So, they'll be able to definitely probably move up to an early advanced, even at a sixth grade test.
Having them do it like that on the video is really awesome because it gives them pride.
And this is one example. I think you saw the low tech went last year, when you came around and saw us singing a song in kindergarten. So, what we find, though, what I've seen visiting all the schools, children are really enjoying this. So, you saw all the grammatical patterns, all the vocabulary that was being taught. Kids are coming, "I want to go," you know, "to ELD and make a movie."
Yeah, exactly, exactly. No, but it's great, smiles on their faces.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your presentation, and thanks for all you guys do. I love seeing that tech integration stuff. I think it just really, it makes, it makes it so much more, it makes it so much more lively and active than just seeing the classroom and writing for...
It helps the teacher.
Yeah. Yeah, so thank you. That was, I love that video.
All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. So... I hope, in case you're wondering, my phone keeps buzzing. I have many helpful friends who are keeping me updated on this one.
I'm sure.
At halftime, Warriors are ahead, I think it was seventy to fifty. Steph Curry needed one more three-pointer to hit four hundred for the season.
Okay, well, we're getting close to the halftime. Watch the end of it. We are section twelve, Classified Personnel, item A, Retirement. We have, the administration recommends approval of the retirement request from Catherine Diane Crowell, School Administrative Assistant at FDR, effective June eighteen, twenty sixteen, and requests that an appropriate resolution be prepared commending her for her years of service with the district. Ms. Crowell has been employed by the district since December thirteen, nineteen eighty-four.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we approve the retirement request from Catherine Diane Crowell, School Administrative Assistant at FDR, effective June the eighteen, two thousand and thirteen, and that an appropriate resolution...
Two thousand and sixteen.
Would I say thirteen? Oh, God, sorry.
Flashbacks.
She would like it if she was...
Yeah, two thousand, no, no, she wants the extra years now. Wait a minute. Two thousand and sixteen, and that appropriate resolution be prepared commending her for her many years of service with the district. And, go ahead.
And we have a second.
I will second that.
All right. And I will say, all those in favor?
Aye.
And congratulations, Ms. Crowell, and enjoy retirement. She has been working for our district since I was an undergraduate.
Well, just to mention, she... Well, I was just going to say that she was a mom in our district, involved in PTA, and there was a time when a superintendent, not as bright as our superintendent here, but anyway, he recommended closing FDR.
There aren't any as bright as this.
And he, they recommended closing FDR, and she headed the, the fight to keep that school open by having everyone come down and park their car and walk over to the school and walk their way across, what's that, Skyline Boulevard with all that traffic and those lights, and see what it would be like for a young child to be walking home, or walking to school if they had to go to the school across the highway. And, and I give her credit for all that she did, and it, it opened the eyes of many people that school was needed in that spot, no matter what. So, besides that, she was real active in PTA, and it's done tremendous amount of help in the district, and we, and then getting a job in the district and spending all that time, she really needs to be commended.
All right. That's great. Section thirteen, Board Policies, item A, Board Policies ARs, December twenty fourteen, Board Policy Revision, Second Reading. The board will review and revise board policies and administrative regulations from the December twenty fourteen CSBA Board Policy Revisions, as stated in a second reading. I have to say, I did find something that needs to be fixed. It's not actually a substantive change, but it's on, it's AR sixty-one forty-five point two F.
Sixty-one?
Sixty-one forty-five, and the page number for the, at least in the digital version, is page one hundred and ninety-three. And there's a section that is marked out, scratched out, and then we have, start with a new number one, and in the scratching out, it included the introductory sentence that explained why we had a number one. And I can...
Say that.
Oh, okay.
Say it again, it's AR...
It's AR sixty-one forty-five point two F. So, you might get there faster than I can.
Forty-five point.
Yeah, I see the introductory statement that should be there, should read, "Before a student participates in interscholastic athletic activities, a superintendent or designee shall send a notice to the student's parents, guardians, which..." And then, the first one struck out because it's a, it's a high school, I believe.
Yeah, I think that...
Yeah, and then, yeah, then it goes to number one, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just need to re, restore that one...
I think we can restore that, that one sentence.
Explains why, so...
Yeah.
I saw it.
You found it, too.
Thank you for identifying that.
Hey, so...
We get too happy sometimes with the sounds.
Yeah. Okay, so, I found something, I have sort of a question on it. It's AR fifty-one forty-one point four D. On the bottom, it's in red. And it's, it's talking about where the services can be, and I just wondered, is that the closest place that we have for services for our parents in Belmont?
Okay, so, it's fifty-one forty-four point what?
Point four D.
Point four.
Abuse prevention and reporting.
Yeah, but I mean, it seems to be, don't we have anything closer to home?
No, we do not. But that's where the county, the county center is there.
That's not for the parents, that's where we report to.
That's where we send our, where we mail our reports.
The parents don't go there, we do?
No, we, we mail something there.
We mail, okay, I'm sorry. I just thought that if it's for the parents to be involved in this, that's too far away.
Yeah, they don't want to be there.
They don't want to, yeah. Oh, I see.
They're in trouble if they're there.
Well, it, it could be one parent going because there's another abuse, I mean, it doesn't mean that abusing parent's going to go.
Yeah, we're just required to put in our policies where the report needs to be mailed, and it's on the form as well, so.
Okay.
It's just duplicative.
So, if they do report it, then somebody comes out?
Right.
Maybe.
Investigation.
That's the idea.
Yeah.
Anyway, just struck me as like, jeez.
So, are there any other questions or corrections?
No, I didn't find anything else.
Okay, so if, if we don't have any other questions or corrections, could we have a motion to approve those policies with the minor adjustment that I suggested?
I'll make that motion, to approve it with the one adjustment, with the part that got scratched out.
One sentence, yeah.
Scratched, to unscratch it, no?
Second.
For a second reading.
Yes, that was proven for the second.
Do you want it for a second reading? We can just approve that, and we can move on to the next packet.
Yeah, this was the second.
This was the second one.
Yeah, so we can just approve it with, with that minor change.
Yeah. Okay, and so, we have a motion to approve it, we have a second from Mr. Ali. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? That was unanimous. Okay. Board Member Comments, Reports, and Reflection on the Board Meeting Guidelines.
I focused on, we will listen actively to all ideas, we will listen openly without preparing responses, and we listened well, we asked questions, and we got our answers. Thanks.
Why do we sort of pick the same ones? That's the one I picked, but I'm going to have to say I picked it, so. Okay, we will build upon the ideas, wait, I'm sorry, the next one. Four. We will listen actively to all ideas, we will listen openly without preparing responses. I think we, we met that goal.
I picked, we will bring our best selves to the meetings, being fully present, ready to contribute, and be responsible. We were talking a lot about planning for the future and how we could use LCAB and all those, those funds, so I thought we were meeting that goal.
And I think that we will strive to support our district message of showing up by attending meetings, arriving and starting on time and ending on time. I think we did pretty well. We were a few minutes behind our hopeful schedule, but, yeah, that was, yeah, that was hopeful.
Well, sharing with all the children that came made it well worth it.
Yes, yes.
And also sharing about the language, English language was great.
And because we are not having a closed session, we don't have to address that or report out from the closed session. So, I would like to adjourn the meeting as Ms. Bruce Whiteley requested in honor of, in memory of Ms. Jane Wyatt, Wyatt, from the Daily City Finance Department. So, if we could have just a moment of silence. Okay, and this meeting is adjourned.